About our technical difficulties, for the record, no discussion was had or action taken during the outage. So we are now back to ordinance thirteen twenty-nine, amending electrical rates, Mr. Styles.
Yes, sir. So this adopts the language that would allow us to pass the KPP surcharge directly through to our customers. For the two thousand twenty-one, the February winter storm charge, which KPP has voted to do for twenty-four months or until they have collected the amount of money that has been put out to help pay for that. The language you kind of see there, it just allows for that additional surcharge to be applied. If you were to approve this today, it won't go into effect until what would be the bill that people received in June. So that would be the mid-April to mid-May bill. We don't like to change the rate on people when they don't have any opportunity to make any adjustments to that. So, you know, the amount's to basically an eight-point-four percent increase. This surcharge is on kilowatt hour, which is what we get our bill from KPP looks like. We'll get a kilowatt hour receipt on that. So what we would plan on doing is to apply this and then just directly pay it to KPP. And then the intention would be to replenish the surcharges that we paid from our reserves for February, March, April, and May by carrying the surcharges on until we had basically collected that amount of money. And that would be based on kind of looking at previous averages, about seventy thousand dollars that we would be pulling out of the reserve fund to cover those months while we have it, or we're getting charged, but we don't have the surcharge in place. So, you know, we would obviously, once that money was collected and recuperated into the reserve funds, we would end that surcharge. So that was the intention. You could also, you know, the city could also eat that if that was something that you wanted to do. But the intention and how it was designed was to be able to collect what we paid out on those months.
Just if I'm clear, KPP will probably need it for twenty-four months, but three months of those will already have occurred.
Already been paid, correct.
So then we would still do twenty-four months to each of our consumers.
Yep.
And the last three months would pay us back.
To repay us, yeah, correct. That is correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Styles? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to approve ordinance thirteen twenty-nine, amending electrical rates, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the council. Councilman Garing. Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Motion is approved four-zero. We will now move to item, agenda item E four, summer two thousand twenty EBH invoice for four thousand five hundred ten dollars forty-two cents. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is an invoice for the US fifty industrial project that's going to be started here in the next month. It was billed, billed and designed for EBH on this project. It came into the office and it got missed. It went through the cracks a little bit there. So we found out about it. They asked us about it. So we need to go back and pay this bill. It's the four thousand five hundred ten dollars forty-two cents, and it's tied to design and survey work for this project.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the summer two thousand twenty EBH invoice in the amount of four thousand five hundred ten dollars forty-two cents.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Garing moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Driggers, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four-oh. All right, agenda item E five, mowing bids, Mr. Styles.
So we've received the mowing bids for the six areas that we approved for letting at the council meeting last month. You can kind of see the bids that we got back. Total cost would be about three thousand dollars per month, eighteen thousand for the six-month mowing season. We feel like, based on the amount of time and effort we spend in doing this, mowing these areas, that we'll actually come out a little bit ahead on this. We'll certainly defer some costs that we know for a mower that we would need to be replacing too. So it's a good opportunity to see how this works. We don't feel like we'll be losing anything at this point to give this a try. One of the big things is with the recreation department, with hiring a new golf superintendent. Gary currently does a lot of mowing in the sports complex. So we shifted some of that stuff around so that they don't have to do that. And then it would be, so we would need somebody to pick that up, and that's one of the big areas. In area four, we were asking not to necessarily award that at this time because low bidder was Little Big Little Lawn Care. We were concerned that they may not consider, or may not take that because they only got the one. But after talking with them, they are in town those days making, they're in town in Hillsborough already, so they were okay with just doing the one. So we have the funds for this split between the street, rec, and museum, which is also receiving some services here. So we don't, we won't be able, we won't have to put on any additional help for this either, so that's a plus for us. So we're asking to award all the bids at this point. Contingent on getting an executed contract approved by the city attorney, we need a short agreement for that. Some of them have more formal bids, which you could just sign and do, but some of them didn't. So it was a situation where we felt like we need to have a contract, and Kimberlin will draft that and would be able to sign that. We'd either be, you could either have the mayor or myself sign that, depending on how you want to look at that. So that's kind of how we came out, and you can kind of see the bids on that second page. We did get, Ken Carlson, who used to work for us in the trash department, he was a low bidder on three of the areas. And he did, he provided, every one of them provided the insurance and the workman's comp proof or waiver that we required as well. So they're all good to go as far as we're concerned.
So are you saying we can accept all six areas?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to award the bids for areas one, two, three, four, five, and six to the low bidders as recommended by the city administrator. And I would suggest that on this, we allow the city administrator to sign the contracts. Would somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, it's moved by Councilman McCarty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Lowen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four-oh. Bids are approved. And we'll now step off the agenda for just a second. And we have in attendance Dale Dawkey, our street superintendent, and he has a new employee that he would like to introduce to the council. Dale?
Yeah. So this is our new hire, Jesse Dirks. And he lives in town here. He has a couple kids. And they attend public school here in Hillsborough. And just in the little over a month time that he's been here, he's proved to be a valuable asset. He's very willing to learn and catching on quickly and has good work ethic, so I'm glad we hired him.
Great. Well, Jesse, welcome aboard. We're happy to have you and look forward to many years working together. All right. Thank you, Dale.
You.
We'll now move on to agenda item E six, which is strategic planning discussion, Mr. Styles.
Okay, so following up on the workshop we had on the twenty-third, I've updated the main focus areas of the plan. So the childcare workforce, planning, public safety, community development, housing, and financial stability. One of the things we needed to do was come up with some vision, a vision statement or maybe a value statement. That's kind of, it kind of can work interchangeably in this sense. So I've taken the opportunity, based on our conversation, to come up with a few options. They are completely wide open, and I am not proud of any of them in particular. So if they need to be picked apart, changed, mixed up, we're more than happy to do that. Yes, so those are the options we kind of put out there. I think it kind of captured those things. And if there's anything in the plan, actual goals, we can kind of talk about those two. I think it would be great if we could get the group back together at some point to kind of talk a little bit more, finalize some things, and then get everything kind of buttoned up, so.
Okay, so at this point, you're recommending setting another work session?
Yeah, setting another work session for either later this month or early in May. Maybe able to do it in conjunction with our public hearing, special meeting.
I was going to ask you, I mean, I know Councilman McCarty has, Tuesdays are generally open for you, are they not?
Yes, they are. Oh, I've been.
Okay, so if we can't do it on the twentieth, we could possibly do it on the following Tuesday, the special meeting?
Yeah.
And do a work session following?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, well, let's look towards that.
Okay.
Okay. Does that take care of that?
Yeah, that's pretty much it, unless you wanted to talk about more of that stuff in there. But we can do it at the work session.
Yeah, I like what you've done here. You know, we talked about the things that we can embrace and have in common. I do like the idea of the fact that we're a town on the prairie and, you know, what it takes to make a living out here on the prairie is different than what it takes in other places in the country. And I think that's something that provides some values that we all can embrace and get our arms around. And I think it would, I think it would resonate with folks, you know. So I like that. And, you know, again, we don't want to make it too long-winded or anything. You know, it's got to be something short and sweet. So, anyway. Any other comments or questions regarding that? Okay, well, hearing none, we will recess the council meeting, and I will turn the floor over to David Lowen, who's chairman of the Public Building Commission for our Public Building Commission meeting.
Okay, I call in, Public Building Commission meeting to order. You have minutes in the past meeting. Quite short. Have you all received those and read them?
Yes.
Okay, I would like a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any changes or issues with the minutes? Hearing none, I just would take a vote. All those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We'll move on to our only item of business, and that has to do with a request from Salem Home. And I'm going to turn that over to Peter and allow him to make his request.
Everybody go direct. Okay. One of the thing that has been done, and I really want to thank you, the mayor, the council, councils, and also Matt, who just joined us recently. It was very nice that now we have the building back to us, Salem Home, the portion that we occupied. And I also want to appreciate too that most of the things, especially utilities, have been able to be, you know, connected, separated. So that part is done, which is very important. I want to thank you guys for doing that. The portion that really has been, like, the main thing that has now been done is the heating and cooling because the system is still joined together. And it's a two-pipe system. It's an old system. If you start counting from nineteen sixty-eight, we are talking about across sixty-three years. Then if you start counting from nineteen seventy-four, that's about forty-five years. How it's joined, you know, there are two pipes that runs from the kitchen, from the mechanical room all the way through the kitchen, goes through the hospital, and then go at the fade in nineteen sixty-eight. So that is, that part is connected with the hospital. And you can't just go to the kitchen at the carpet, carpet, the pipe. That would be the easiest thing to do. But then, if you did that, then we wouldn't have heating and cooling on the nineteen sixty-eight portion. And I don't know if you can see from the map there, the portion I'm talking about. It's about ten rooms on the southeast side there. You know, you can count everything from true twos, dark teens, all the way going to the southeast. And then there may be some other rooms around there. So the easiest way to do it would be to have a heating and cooling for that portion. And then you just go near the kitchen, fire door there, carpet, carpet from there. I have had so many people come there, engineers, look at it, and they think that's probably the best way. People also gave us two option. Their first option was to do what they call VRF, like what the hospital has. And their bill was kind of expensive. But they also gave us another option, which they also told me they don't want to do it. But if that is the only way we can do it, they can still do it. The other way would be to run two pipes from the mechanical room, go through the apartment, and then go up and get it to the nineteen sixty-eight. No wonder, but he said if that's the only way we can do it, that was a hundred, about a hundred and ten. Then if you add taxes, that's about a hundred and twenty. So prior construction came at a hundred. We left within a hundred and fifty-six, which he would put a new system there. The good thing with this system, you don't have to use the pipes anymore. You know, the residents will have their own thermostat. They can switch back and forth, hold, cool, in a time they want. Because eventually, that's exactly what would happen to the entire building. I'm hoping that by the time I retire, that will be done. Because I know our system is old, for five years old. I know it cannot go another forty-five years from now. So that's why we are really requesting. And the other thing is, if something happens on the hospital, the pipes, we shut the whole system. Same thing, something happens at Salem Home side, we shut the whole system, drain the pipe, and do the repair. So it's always very tough. And we are, again, it's still, we're still, when the hospital was there, we were doing forty-five, fifty-five. We would pay fifty-five percent of all the utilities, and they would be paid forty-five. So when they left, you know, and I had a meeting with the R.A., the R.A. decided, okay, we'll only repair electricity. We won't pay the gas. But guess what? During winter cold, the gas bill is very high. So it was kind of left, you know, it's not fair for both the city and Salem Home. So right now, the hospital is paying, the city is paying about forty-five percent of electricity bill only. Even like us, we still pay the gas that is in the gas, one of the gas meter inside the hospital. And we don't even use that water heater. That's just to hit the water at the hospital. So the previous administrator didn't want to pay. So we have continued to pay because we keep on hearing the labor quality might be needed one time. So I think it's something, yes, I know it is expensive, but I think at some point, we need to really separate it completely. Because either ways, we are paying, think about it, that two thousand a year, that three thousand, in five years, that is more than one hundred and fifty, fifty thousand. So somehow, we needed to have the ready point for this arrangement because we, even on our side, we have done a lot with the building. We just put a new boiler because the other one just went out, and it was in the middle of the winter. Thanks God, we had two of them, so the other one was a backup. So we don't have to move anybody. But it was extremely cold, and we spent a hundred and twenty thousand. And then we have been always wanting to do a backup generator because that's where the regulations are going in the next few years. Everything else in home will have to have their own generator that cannot just power a few lights, that can power the whole building. And that's what Jonah is doing for us, and he will be done in the next few weeks. So we are grateful that we were able to do that because we were able to do a little bit of saving through payroll protection. So that's the only way we were able to do that. So right now, you know, we can afford a very big, major project. So that's why we come to you requesting that you help us with this so that we can, I think if everything is separated, it will be good. We hope that whoever comes on the other side, they'll see, they'll come and find that already everything is done. We don't have to go back and forth. Because for me, I look forward to whoever is coming on the other side. Maybe we can do some services, you know? Maybe, you know, we can do their order. Maybe we can do meals. Or possibly, if they, I know the generator that's going to be left there, it's probably not going to be enough to back up the whole facility. Maybe we can work a plan because I will have a bigger generator. Maybe we can share some of that generator if they wanted to, you know? Because they just have to do some few work there, and then we can work it together. So unless you have any questions, mine was very short.
So let's be clear about this. What exactly are you requesting from the city?
I'm requesting a hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Okay. And what is, and that is to, for what now, exactly?
That, one hundred and fifty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-eight. That will put new heating and cooling on the southeastern part. And that part was actually added after nineteen fifty-three. So it was put in nineteen sixty-eight. And that's why it's completed, it's kind of separated from the other part of the building, but it's connected. But its heating and cooling system is different, even though it's still a two-pipe system. And that would completely separate everything. It's the last one thing that has not been done.
So it would completely separate the heating and the cooling from the part which you own and the part which the city owns? Is that what you're saying?
And then the other part would just be to cut those pipes. That can be done easily, to cut those pipe and carpet. That way, those pipes don't have to take to cool or heat the hospital attic. Because that's how it heated, cooled in nineteen sixty-eight. That same pipe that goes to the hospital, heat or cool the hospital attic, and then goes all the way to the nineteen sixty-eight.
So the old system is on the hospital side?
No, the system is still on our side. They just ran the pipes through, from us to the hospital. And that was done in nineteen ninety-nine when they replaced those two boilers. Instead of putting them on the hospital side, they put them at Salem's side. So what they did, they ran two pipes, because it's a two-pipe system. And those two pipes go out to the hospital. Originally, before everything was kind of disconnected, they were heating and cooling the patient's rooms at the hospital, at the attic. But because of the major pipe breaks that happened two, three years ago, that was rerouted. So we don't get heating and cooling in a patient's room. So it only does the attic of the hospital. Because the pipes of the hospital were too old. There was no way they could be repaired. Framing came, they did it. Within one hour, it passed again. It was like a leak. The hospital burst.
And we understand that you are in the process of replacing the heating and cooling right now. Is that, is that what the construction is that's going on on the, on the north side of the building there?
No, we are, that's the backup generator.
That's where you're putting the backup generator?
Yes. It's a three hundred and fifty KW. And that will be able to power the whole Salem Home in case we ever decide to expand, although I don't know where the space would come from. Or if whoever buys or rents on the other side, if we would work on a plan. Because you only need it during, if something major happens, or maybe you lose power for four, three hours. It wouldn't be a big deal. We would be willing to work with whoever gets there.
I believe you've connected with Matt concerning this issue already. Matt, did you have anything that you wanted to clarify from the city's perspective?
Yeah, I mean, we just kind of give some context to it. I sent this out a little bit earlier today. But the separation costs, we've already spent about a hundred and, a hundred and one thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-two cents since two thousand and eighteen to separate the buildings. And so there's, there was a question about, you know, how much, how much have we spent to do this already? The electrical costs that we kind of, that Peter kind of mentioned. So the way that's worked, they split the electrical as much as they could. But the generator that we have is also the backup generator that they were using. But according to Elcon, once their project is finished, they can be completely split off, and we won't have this electrical. They'll be completely split electrically.
No, that does not. I think there is a coefficient there. That may not be, may not separate, may not stop us from heating and cooling the hospital.
Well, that'll separate the electrical.
Yeah, it would completely, because they would have to disconnect it because we can't have to back up.
Correct, correct. So that electrical portion of the, Peter's right. That is the amount that we have spent for electrical. But it's estimated, so, you know, once that forty-five, it's forty-five, fifty-five. So just a point of clarification that that's kind of how it's been done now. But once Elcon finishes with their generator, they will be split. And so that'll be, that'll be in their entire cost, and we'll have our entire cost with the hospital's side. So that will be finished. What we get now with the piping, with the heating, is that what's proposed, what they're talking about, would disconnect our heating and cooling in the attic, which is, it's pretty minimal, to be honest. We've actually talked about and had Flemings come out and give us quotes to put space heaters up in that attic so that we can prevent the fire lines from freezing, which is one of the issues that we had back in February, where we couldn't occupy the building. We dumped the fire lines, drained them out because that heat wasn't sufficient to keep that going. So, in fact, what this proposal would do is, you know, not only would be paying for the heating and cooling to be upgraded in the sixty-eight wing, but it would also completely disconnect the city, the hospital's attic heat, which is fine because we kind of anticipated that. You know, we had anticipated that, and we were working on making that move. You know, we hadn't anticipated doing anything on the Salem side or paying for anything to disconnect those, which would, in fact, you know, that's essentially what they're doing and are asking for is for us to help with the HVAC costs on the south wing. You know, our anticipation on that was that they would be cut, and they would figure out whatever kind of system that they wanted to do to heat and cool their facility. And then we would worry about what we would need to do in ours to make sure that it And then we would worry about what we would need to do in our, ours to make sure that it worked appropriately. So um that was kind of the anticipation. That's what we told Peter. And, you know, I, I felt like a hundred and fifty thousand was a, a pretty big ask for the city, considering how much we've already spent um doing that. Um and then there was a question about the rent and, you know, there, there's some dispute about what the rent is. From, from what I can tell, uh based on the minutes and what's been forgiven and all those other things, there's a pretty substantial amount out there for that, that, you know, the city hadn't collected. So that's kind of just a sidebar to that conversation. I can tell you right now is that the PBC account has a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in it. So if you made a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar uh investment in the name HVAC for the nineteen sixty-eight wing, you're pretty much draining that account completely and won't be able to meet our obligations uh for paying the bond payments that come in there.
Now, those bond payments are pretty hefty.
They're pretty hefty and the hospital still pays us a, a fair chunk of money. But it's, you know, we had this conversation earlier in the year about the burn rate with that uh when we talked about the thirty thousand dollars uh for the fire suppression system. So, you know, I, while I appreciate their perspective on it, I don't, I couldn't recommend you doing this project just for the, the financial impact that it would have on the PBC and the rents. And also I don't think that it's, you know, necessarily our, our responsibility to provide HVAC for the sixty-eight wing. Um you know, it's, it's really something that's, that's on there, you know, something that they need to do. And now that the buildings are split, you know, they're legally divided. Now, this is one thing, I agree, that it probably should be, uh should be done.
But we're gonna have costs on our side anyway, on the hospital side that city owns to just heat the attic, you're saying?
Just to heat the attic, yeah. It, it's not, you know, it's not a hundred and fifty thousand. It's, it's closer to fifteen. And then, of course, you'll have natural gas costs there too. But uh that would take care of the heating issue that we have in there. But that wouldn't, you know, provide, depending on how this is used in the future, that wouldn't provide any heat to any of the rooms. Uh but the, the current system doesn't do that either. So um it would be something that we would have to look at as we just look to develop that. So. Yeah, that, that's kind of the perspective. And then that's, you know, essentially what Peter and I have talked about. I know Peter's also talked to, to Mayor Thurston about it as well. So um, you know, it, it's, it is a decision that is beyond our ability to approve. It has to come from the PBC. But uh from my perspective, I wouldn't recommend that you, that you do that.
So even not recommending it, you'd also have to find a money source to do it.
Correct.
So you're, you're saying you wouldn't recommend spending this money, but as far as separating these systems, you would?
I think that's the thing to do. Um you know, but from our perspective, it was, you know, cut the pipes and let them loop it up. And yeah, and let it, you know, and then when we would move on to what we were gonna do in there uh with the space heaters. So.
And they're gonna replace their pipes anyway?
They, they would have to do whatever they would need to do to do that. It sounds like, you know, based on the, the things, that the boiler system really isn't the best choice ultimately anyway, probably. But, and it didn't sound like the contractor really wanted to do it, but uh that would be the most cost effective option. So.
For, yeah, for that, already we have the boiler, so you would not need a boiler. What he was suggesting is run two pipes from the mechanical room all the way through the apartments, ceilings, and then angle to the nineteen sixty-eight. Without, and that he would connect that to our current system we have, that we are using. And then still go ahead and cap those pipes at the, near the kitchen, kitchen fire. So that was a little bit cheaper, a hundred and ten than you under sales taxes, that's about a hundred and twenty. But he said if that's the only option that's available, he would still do it. But it will, and that way it will be separated effectively, you know?
Yeah, it would be.
But for me, really to tell you the truth, I don't like this arrangement of paying forty-five, fifty-five because I don't know whether those even NABAS are right. Because it's only on electricity, not on gas, you know? And we don't know, we, we don't know, we and you don't know how much energy to be used to heat that attic. We don't know how much.
But I understand it is that we're not gonna be there for very long.
Right. Once that electrical, once their generator is in there, that electrical cost will be completely split.
And once we did, and once you did, like Fleming giving you a quote for heating the attic, that would be completely separate also.
Well, yeah, that would be separate and that would eliminate the need to have the heat.
Right. So there wouldn't be a gas, there wouldn't, any, none of their, none of Salem's gas would be being paid for anything and.
Would be needed to. It would still, if it continued to run there, there's no way it could be eliminated unless it was cut.
Listen to what he was talking about, exactly.
But what I'm saying, that does not eliminate the forty-five, fifty-five. You are still running those pipes.
Oh, I, I guess I'm confused then because that's what I.
I, I, I don't think that's an accurate statement because, just because you're still running the, the water, the hot water or cool water through those pipes. You're still heating or cooling the attic regardless of how we do this. This has got nothing to do with the generator. That's the point I'm trying to make. Yeah, this has got nothing to do with the generator. Because the generator, what we have in the generator is just the, the wire that runs to feed. We use our electricity and in case we lose power, we get electrical. We get that power from the backup generator that we have. And we only get some few lights, few lights only because that's all it can do. So I don't understand what you mean that, that we eliminate completely. It is, until we do the right thing, completely separate, I don't see. Because you may wanna cut those pipes and I may not, I don't have the money to do what I need to do. So for you, you can say, it's all easy to just go and cut those pipe. But you have to think about what happens to the other side.
Sure.
Yeah, we, you can't, until we have the money, you can't cut unless we are ready.
Right. And we're not, we're not intending to cut it. So. But the, the forty-five, fifty-five split does go away because the only reason it's not, the way it is now is because they couldn't completely separate the electrical because of how it was wired with the backup generator. So once they rewire your generator, your electrical meter will give you one hundred percent just what you get. And that will be the meeting reader, would, would be the exact amount that you're using. So that electrical piece goes away. The gas piece doesn't. You're right. That continues. Um and whatever kind of electrical that you have in order to start the pumps and get the generator or the, get the boiler system, whatever electrical is type that, yes, that would still be in there. But at the same time, you know, they, that, that, that falls off. So you'll be paying your full, whatever your actual electrical bill is. The only thing that is still connected is that, those pipes up there uh in, in boiler or in the attic. So, you know, while, while I understand, I understand the predicament, I understand what you're, what you're saying. You know, I don't feel like it's our responsibility is the Public Building Commission to provide heat to the, you know, nineteen sixty-eight wing of your facility. Um and if, if we were to do this, in fact, it would, it would cut the heat in the attic that we already have. So, you know, what little benefit we were getting goes away too. So, you know, we're planning for that. We understand that. But, you know, at the same time, I don't think it's our obligation to, to provide the heat for the nineteen sixty-eight building wing.
It's hard to know how much heat we, we, we use there in the attic. That's the, that's the part I'm trying to say.
That's hard to say.
I don't even agree with this fifty-five, forty-five. It's probably different. It, it's probably different because who did the maths? You know, it's just a number that was thrown there.
And not just for the electrical?
Probably not fair on your side. It's probably, I'm probably could be paying more, you probably could be paying less. But I, I, I think there has to be an added to these at some point, you know? You're spending money on it.
Are there further questions? Where are these been? Well, where do we go from here? That's the question.
Indeed it is.
Yeah, I.
Question. Where do we go from?
That's thing for me, I don't think uh if we don't do anything, I, I, I think we, 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 we don't solve anything. It's, the problem will still be there. It's just that uh it can't just go away like that. Whatever the decision we make, there has to be a way to resolve it. I don't think it's just gonna go away easily.
Oh, the hard fact is, we just don't have the money. The money's not there.
Money's not there, okay.
I mean, you know, we have obligations to those bonds for the hospital. And, uh, you know, I, I'm not interested in, in getting into an argument with anybody. But uh the city did forego fifty-five months worth of rent, which uh, you know, totals up to three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And it was critical at that time that, that we did that.
Right.
Because it was important to keep Salem Hospital going. And, you know, so we have, and, and it was critical to get these buildings split and get this property in Salem's hands so that they can be in control of their own destiny. That was critical and that took way too long. You know, and that was extremely frustrating to me that it took as long as it, as it has to get that done. But thank goodness, it's, it's now done. That all said, you know, we just, I don't, I don't know where the money's gonna come from. I mean, you know, if we, if we gave, if we gave Salem the last of the money in the Public Building Commission, we're gonna be up against it and trying to figure out where to go to the taxpayers to get the money to pay those bonds for the hospital.
Right.
We are, you know, like I said, we are waiting to, to even, you know, even if it's not the whole amount, you know? Maybe if we got even half, maybe we can try to see if we can borrow the rest. We are really willing to work with you guys because I think this really need to be done. And just, just get it separated because I think it's the right thing for everybody. Because I don't, don't think it's fair for you guys to continue paying this thirty-two thousand a year.
Well, and we're not going to. We're not gonna be paying that thirty-two thousand a, a year anymore. Once we get the, uh, once you get your generator wired up, that's the, just, that's a fact, you know? So and, you know, I guess, I guess I want to say something too to you, Peter. I, I have been nothing but impressed and amazed with the job that you have done for Salem Home since you have started there. You took an operation that was teetering on the edge and you have kept that going and you have made it a lot better. And so I understand the passion that you have for Salem Home and the passion you have for your job. And, you know, I couldn't be more appreciative and, and, you know, while I may not a hundred percent agree with everything you've asked for, I will tell you that uh I a hundred percent support, you know, the, the job that you've done and what's, what Salem Home means to this community. And I don't feel like the city has, has, you know, taken a backseat. I mean, if you look at the value and the actual dollars that, that, that we've contributed up to this point since uh, since September of two thousand and sixteen, you know, we're getting close to half a million dollars worth of uh, worth of money that's been, you know, put in that pot to keep Salem going. So, you know, I get it. I mean, it's tough. There's no easy answers here. But I just don't know that, that we can continue to drain the Public Building Commission. I mean, we're already, we already know that we're gonna have to find some other source of revenue to keep this going until the back end of that hospital bond, until their agreement pays off because they will pay us back a hundred percent. But that's a few years down the road. So close to twenty, I mean, it's probably
Yeah.
eight, seven, or nineteen years by, at this point. So before we're gonna start seeing that. So it's just, it's just, uh, it's just a rock and a hard place for everybody. And uh, you know, we have to, this is the group, you know, so Peter has to answer to his constituency and we have to answer to ours. I mean, you know, and, and so I think, uh, I think that's where we're at.
And I, I thank you that you, you appreciate what we have done. When we start, when I started, it was a matter of uh if we continued to pay rent, then we would just have to cross at that point. Because at one time, I was sitting around and I just looked at the account and we had like seven thousand in the account. And the payroll was coming. So um there wasn't any way to continue paying that and still, and still stay in business.
You know, and, and Peter, I, I get it. And, and I, and I don't regret for a minute that, that we, that we stopped making those, you know, asking you to make those payments. But, you know, let's recognize if you had continued to make those payments, you know, that would have contributed three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars into that Public Building Commission fund that uh, that would have made this conversation, you know, today maybe a little different. But that's hindsight. You know, you gotta do what you gotta do to keep the thing going. I get it. I get it. So I, I just don't know where we're gonna find the money unless somebody can come up with a, with an answer that I'm not aware of.
I was thinking maybe you brought in the whole amount, maybe half.
Well, even half, I don't know that we'd have, Peter. That's, I think, what. Yeah.
Matt, what again was the amount that's left in the PBC?
Uh, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents.
And we're making what kind of payments every month on that?
Oh, yeah, I don't have that from him, sorry.
I know I wrote a pretty hefty check last time.
Pretty.
We're about three thousand dollars.
Yeah, they, they're pretty significant, yeah.
We have to do that every.
I haven't said much today. I'm, but I'd be remiss if I didn't give you my thoughts on that rent. I don't see how in the world you can justify charging us sixty-five hundred dollars a month rent for a building that you have absolutely zero investment in. What is the justification for the rent?
You know, Wendell, we've had this conversation more than, more than one time.
Okay.
The justification for it is the fact that the city bailed out the operation so that it could continue to function and operate. The city used city money and city financing to get to keep the hospital in Salem Home going. And I mean, if I had JT on, on the, uh, on the call with us, we could go back through that again. And I know that you and I, we've gone through that more than once.
What, you bailed out Salem Home?
Yeah.
In what, what respect?
Wendell, I don't, I, I don't find it a value to keep having this conversation over and over and over again.
Thank you very much. But I certainly don't understand it.
Well, your, your opinion is, is noted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Question is, how do we move from here? And uh I don't see this as something we were going to resolve today. Unless someone has a motion, someone has an idea that we can throw out on the table that we haven't seen yet. And so the only ideas are what we have in front of us.
I guess I would say that I thought when we did the break, we were done. So that's, I'm a little, guess, when we actually did it, I thought that was kind of the done point. It looks like we're not quite done because we're still sharing.
There's a little bit, little bit without line, right? Well, the, they, yeah, the costs were estimated. The reason why their electrical costs are estimated is because they couldn't split them out without taking them completely off the backup generator that we had. So that was the solution.
So what I hear Peter saying is there's no way to just loop this line. It has to go through this because it's a full loop, correct?
Yeah, it would have to.
Has to be a full loop.
Yeah, it has to be a loop somehow. Uh, you know, and, and the, and the age of it is probably an issue as well. I mean, otherwise you could probably just cut it and loop it. But, you know, that was what we anticipated when we started having that conversation that.
We would have to find something to heat the attic.
Yeah.
But that's it.
That was, that was kind of how we approached it, yeah. So.
The only way for them to loop it is to loop it back around the same way it came with another set of lines.
Yeah, it becomes basically a C in. Yeah, and becomes basically a C instead of a uh, or they can move to something else. Uh, which was one of the other options that Peter had there, which was the four hundred and fifty.
Four hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah.
That was two. P one is sort of, you sort of very expensive because that's why I got beds from tile and that's PMC came that, you know, even wanna touch it. But tile is normally, you know, you can get a good price with the tile because, you know, it's not a union company, you know, P one is a union company. For him, he came with just doing the pipes, putting the pipes again, but going through a different direction. Instead of going through the hospital, he was gonna go through the apartments and still come to the same spot.
Yeah, so you go upstairs, you come downstairs, and you come back up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which was less than.
And that's how you create your loop.
Yeah. We tell we still take that one, but not.
Unless we can figure out some alternate, alternative method of funding, some kind of grant or or something, you know, that could help support this, we just honestly, I, we just don't have the money to do it.
Have the money and.
It didn't have anything to do with whether we wanna do it or not wanna do it. You know, the the fact is, we just don't have the money. And even, and 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 to Brent's point, even if we, uh, even if we considered half, you know, we're not, we're not in a point, you know, we've still got this can on the, on the hospital bond, you know, that's been kicked down the road a little bit that we still have to figure out. And our time, you know, remaining to get it figured out is coming soon, sooner rather than later. You know, and again, you know, I I uh, I didn't mean to be disrespectful to, uh, to to Mr. Dirks, but the fact is, is that people with the city and people with Salem negotiated this rent of rental agreement. It was a legal agreement that Peter's predecessors signed, my predecessors signed. And so, you know, it was, it was something in place, you know, and it existed. And we were getting that money.
I remember, yeah.
And, uh, and, uh, you know, but but again, like I said before, I'm not, I I don't regret that, you know, that the city made that decision because Salem is an important piece of of, you know, the, uh, the, uh, city of Hillsborough.
It's an important service industry.
In conjunction with with the, uh, with their, with their their competitor that, you know, that's next door. I mean, both of those businesses serve a vital function for Hillsborough.
Definitely.
And, uh, you know, so I just don't have an answer. I wished I did. I felt like we, you know, when we did this last Johnson Control separating alarms, the fire suppress, the fire suppression system, the thirty-four thousand, I mean, that was a pretty deep gulp when we approved that. But, you know, I felt like we needed to do that and, uh, and I feel like we stepped up to the plate. So I don't feel like, you know, the city has, uh, has not tried, you know, to, uh, to be supportive of of Salem Home. I feel like we have been. And, uh, so, you know, I'm sorry, we're in this, we're in this spot, but I don't have, I don't have another answer right now unless some alternate funding mechanism can be.
Unless I hear some kind of motion, we will just tend to having to forget it for now and and move on. Because I can't go anywhere without a decision to do something one way or another. And if we don't have a motion one way or the other, then we're gonna have to just table, just let it go. And, uh, that's where we are. That's where we are. I can't make that decision for this group and I can't, and I'm, and I don't have a motion. So, if I don't hear anything within a few seconds here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. We're, we're done. I think we've heard what's, what the issue is. And, uh, of course, if someone comes up with a grand, great, great idea that we haven't thought of yet, maybe we can work with something.
Hey, I can move the lamp.
Thank you very much, Peter. We appreciate you coming.
Yep, yep.
Keep up the good work over there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And, uh, like I said before, no one is disputing that you guys have not helped or supported. So, that was not on my, actually, I do not even, I was not even gonna talk about the the rent until it came up. After I got the title, I was, I promised myself I would never talk about that day of day.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks.
I now call meeting adjourned.
Okay. We're now back in, uh, in session with the city council meeting. And, uh, we're agenda item E F, or F, excuse me, board appointments. There are none today. And, uh, we will move on to item G, City Administrators Report. Mr. Styles.
Yeah. Uh, well, the first thing I wanna do is make a big announcement on, uh, donations to the museum. So Steve, our Steve Ast, our museum director, has been working pretty hard on getting a couple donations for the Bartle House, uh, which is a project that we've had some money in the, in the community foundation for, for a little bit a while now. Uh, but Steve just finished receiving ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars for the Bartle House. Pretty significant donation. Yeah, uh, twenty-five thousand of that, a little over twenty-five thousand came from Bob and Esther Rupp. And then uh, just short of seventy-five thousand of that came from an anonymous donor. So, uh, we're able to get those transactions completed and, uh, we're, Steve's gonna get to work on trying to raise some more money for that and hopefully have a really nice project there at the Bartle House. So it's a pretty significant, pretty significant amount of money. And I wanna give Steve a a shout out and kudos for all the hard work on that. Excellent job. So.
Steve.
Yes. Go Steve. Um, other things going on, COVID vaccines. So we've been hosting, uh, Marion County Pods, our point of delivery for the vaccine. And also the hospitals had several vaccine clinics here. Uh, continue to get more and more out into the county and we just continue to work with them as best we can. If they could use our facility, they seem to like it. So, um, we're just kinda keep on moving with that. Uh, I think we've completed hiring for all, well, we have completed for all of our open positions. Uh, very excited to announce, we've got, uh, for the golf course superintendent, we hired Avery Unruh. Avery's a local guy, uh, scheduled to start next week. He's gonna work with Gary throughout the rest of the year. Uh, very excited to have Avery on board there. I think he'll do a great job and, um, groundskeeping's kind of in his blood. And so I think he's really excited and we're happy to have him too. Uh, the Water and Sewer Department hired Shane Ringel, uh, who's, who's from out west. Uh, he starts either tomorrow or Thursday. Um, moving into town, so happy to have Shane in that, that position there. Uh, we've hired Danielle Bartle to fill the city clerk's position. Danielle comes from, uh, she's got a great background in accounting and, uh, previously working at the MB Foundation. Um, happy to have Danielle coming on board. She'll start at the end of April. Uh, worked with Jan a little bit there, have a little bit of overlaps that, uh, when Jan resign, uh, retires in in June, mid-June, we'll have some, um, have somebody there. And then we also filled our front desk position, um, Monday morning. Uh, so Rachel, Rachel Plener is gonna be joining us with the front desk clerk. Uh, Rachel's coming to us. She's got a lot of experience. I think she'd be a great, uh, great fit on the team, right attitude, uh, hard worker. So I think we'll, we'll have, uh, some, I think we've got some pretty good hires here. Got a pretty good slate. So really excited, happy to be done with hiring. We've done a ton of interviews, so, uh, it's a.
So how much cross-training do you do in the office?
Uh, we are gonna be doing a lot more cross-training in the office. Right now Karen has been cross-training with Mona, so she's pretty well spoken on the utility. Um, and then Rachel's gonna take over and do some court stuff. And then, uh, we got to have some rec things going on. Uh, Steve has helped us out kind of to get through some of that and learn some of those things. And then he's gonna pass on what he's learned. So, um, and we're also gonna find somebody to do payroll. I've learned payroll and I've been doing payroll. Um, and so we're gonna kind of rearrange the duties there. So that's, we're looking forward to it. Yes. Uh, Fiber Project, we got a big light-up event here on Thursday at two PM in City Hall here. Uh, they were working right up until we started this meeting. Uh, they've got fiber dropped in here and it's smoking fast according to the technicians. So, uh, that's probably one of the reasons why we lost, lost our feed there for a second. They've been kind of doing some cutting over. So really excited to have it here, uh, in in City Hall. And that event will be showcasing kind of the speed difference of what's currently out there versus this new stuff. Uh, it's gonna be a really good event. Um, Mayor Thurston's gonna be speaking at it and Dale Jones also. He's the CEO of TCW. Uh, he'll be making some comments and uh, they'll be signing up people in phase one. They're, they're ready to fire it up and turn it on. So, uh, anyone who, you know, I'd invite anybody here on the council to come and take a look at it. Um, and then, you know, if anyone's in phase one, come on down and and get signed up and take a look at it. It's really good. Moving, moving forward with that project. Uh, Baumgarts came in. Uh, we had a conversation with them. They're having a hiring fair. It's actually gonna be in our west uh, room over here on April twenty-first and twenty-second, looking at about ha, two dozen people, give or take. Uh, they've hired a store manager, um, and that person I think is in McPherson or somewhere around there should be coming in. But uh, they'll have a lot of positions open. And so from, uh, I don't have the times on here, but, um, you can go onto their website. There's a link, uh, baumgars.com. And they'll have a link in one of their event boxes. So if someone's interested in finding out more information about that, they're, they're welcome to it. So that's another, another exciting development in the community. Got a lot of good projects going on. And that Baumgarts one's gonna be great too. So looking forward to that. Um, engineering presentations, we've got four engineering companies. We're gonna do in-person presentations. That's gonna be on next Tuesday, the thirteenth. Uh, from about one forty-five to four forty-five. So we've, we've learned our lesson in the past. You always limit engineering presentations. No offense to engineers, but they tend to be a little bit, they tend to go on a little long. So, uh, we've, we've limited those out. And so uh, they'll have forty-five minutes apiece to do a presentation and then question and answer. Uh, we have Swab Eaton, MKEC, and PEC all coming in. Uh, they're all from Wichita. And then EBH will also be, um, doing a presentation as well. So anybody wants to attend, uh, we would encourage that. We'll have, uh, the city, city folks there, uh, who reviewed the applications. You know, I I think it'll be a good opportunity if you wanna have that. But if if we have more people there, then we, we can fit into an open meeting kind of situation. We'll have to call a special meeting, but um, you're more than happy to come, be more than happy to to figure out how to accommodate everybody on that. Um, retirement parties, we've got all the hirings. We've got some retirements too. Uh, so Mona Heinz party is set for Friday, April thirtieth, from four PM to six PM here in City Hall. That's Mona's last day. June, uh, Jan's, I don't think we've set officially yet. I don't know if we've officially announced it, but it's in the middle half of June. So that's gonna be coming too. Uh, sales tax, we got the receipts for the first quarter for twenty-one and things continue to look pretty good. Um, twenty twenty and twenty nineteen were, well, twenty twenty was a good year, um, but twenty twenty-one's proven to be a little bit better. So we're actually right now, currently after the first three months, twenty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-nine, eighty-eight ahead of where we were last year. So last year was a good year. This year's fixing to be a little bit better. So, um, a home of champions sign, one of the things that we have when we're coming into town on Ash, uh, South Ash there is a, a home of champions sign. And I, I put a picture of it in there so you can kind of know what I'm talking about. At least I thought I did. Maybe I didn't. Um, so it, it, it's a kind of a, well, it's, it's road signs that we've got on utility poles. And it's got, every time they win a championship, the Trojan Championship, we add a little sign to it. Um, so we need to figure out what we're gonna do for the boys' basketball championship. But I thought, you know, it's a good time to re-look at that sign because it's a little bit worn out right now. So, um, contacted the chamber and they, they were one of the first people who, or it says it's sponsored by them. So, uh, they're, they're interested in helping out. The CDB is interested. We've talked with Baker Brothers about getting something put together. So, uh, find some partners and and do a new sign, I think appropriate sign for the home of champions. So, uh, very excited. Always great to add another one to the list. And hopefully we add another one this year for track. So, um, that is all I had, sir.
Okay, any, any questions for Mr. Styles?
Lot going on.
There is a lot going on.
How many did you say Baumgarts was hiring?
About two dozen.
Two dozen?
Two dozen.
Okay, I thought you said two thousand.
No, 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 twenty-four.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a lot of great stuff going on.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, you know, I couldn't be more excited for, for, uh, for the city. But I gotta tell you, I have been extremely pleased with the hiring that we've been able to do. And the fact that we are, you know, setting ourselves up for that next generation. I mean, we've got people that have been with the city, you know, just an ungodly amount of years, you know, and and the fact that the city of Hillsborough is a place that people wanna work for that long, you know, is impressive. I'm hoping that, you know, with this next generation, they might feel the same way. So, uh, but I, terms of skills and, uh, and, uh, work ethic and everything else, I, I really pleased with, uh, with what you've done, Matt. And congratulations. Thank you. I know it's a lot of work.
It is, but I think we're, I think we're in good shape.
And just so everybody knows, I told Matt, you know, we talked about being part of this and 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 Barney, you were, you were part of that, uh, interview process too on the city clerk side. So I appreciate that. But, uh, but I told Matt, you know, about my involvement. I said, look, we hired you. That's our job.
I know.
So, uh, so he stepped right up to it. And and I think, uh, I think we're gonna be in good shape. And and, uh, I also would be remiss if I didn't, you know, express my thanks in in a council meeting to those that are retiring, uh, to Glenda Stoppel, to, uh, Mike Dirksen, to, uh, Mona Heine and 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 Jan Myss, Myssinger, you know, it just, you know, it's just amazing the work and the effort and the, and the imprint that they put on the city and and with their tenure here. And so, uh, you know.
And Gary too.
And oh, that, thank you. Thank you. Gosh, how can you forget Gary?
Gary's a workhorse.
I'm telling you, you know, the, uh, it's, it's good. Avery's gonna have his hands full. That's all I can say.
That's true.
Is because, uh, you know, Gary did, uh, probably more than a, more than a full-time job. So.
A share and a half.
Yeah. So again, you know, we're gonna miss every one of them. But, uh, I wish him the best and and thank them from the bottom of my heart for for their service. So, is there anything else that needs to go? We need to have council comments. So apologize. We're on to agenda item H. So I'll just go around. Renee?
I don't think I have any today.
Okay, Barney? Any comments?
That's a good person. I thought we hired a good person for the city clerk. I think she'll do a fine job.
Thank you. David?
No, I have comments today.
All right. Brent?
Yeah, I had one question on the mowing, um, that came up. Do the people who weren't awarded the bids, will they be notified?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was just.
We hadn't got that far yet. Yeah.
And I didn't think we had. And that's how I answered it, that I thought you'd, you'd hear if you didn't, but I didn't get asked that question.
Yeah, we always notify everybody who doesn't receive it. So they'll have an opportunity.
That's the one I had.
Okay. All right. Any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, meeting adjourned.